... Hello. We call the public hearing in order. Thank you, Governor.
Joe Fray Francisco with the Appalachian Council of Governments is here to discuss the application of the Community Development Block Grant or Stormwater Drainage Study.
Hi, thank you everybody. Thank you for having us. I'm just here to talk about the application. This public hearing is actually a requirement. In order to submit the application, they want to know that there's been an application public hearing for the locality. You guys are applying for a stormwater drainage study. You're going to be requesting forty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty from Community Development Block Grant funds for this, and then part of the match will come from the town, twenty-five thousand of the rest of it will be requesting from Rural Infrastructure Authority for the remaining twenty-eight thousand. So it's actually two different applications, one for Community Development Block Grant and the other for RIA. The study, basically, they're going to do analysis. Right now, there's no maps or any type of records relating to the storm drainage system in the city, so they'll be doing research on all of that, and then they'll be producing mapping so that you can later then do some things with your system, see what you have, and be able to apply for future projects through CDPG for actual construction rather than just the plan. But this is an absolutely great start, and I think this will set you up for, you know, ultimately, not only CDPG but possibly other funding sources. So it'll be a good tool for your, for the town to use. It's an eighteen-month project timeline. This application will be submitted next week, next Friday, about fifteen. Usually, it takes a few months. If you get awarded, feel confident you will, but it's about December that you will get your grant. So it should be pretty quick, since it's just a study. But that's about it. I mean, it's pretty simple, so if you guys have any questions or anything that needs to be explained.
You ready? You ready? You ready?
Nothing, nothing.
Pretty good job.
Thanks. Thanks, I appreciate you guys a lot.
We would love to match it.
Oh, well, it won't be me, it'll be a consultant to do those things. That is not my specialty, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to close the public hearing because there's no one here.
Yeah, we're closing. We're closing. Please call the meeting in order. He applies to the Federal Innovation Act. He tells us this meeting was submitted by fact. This is Parker Harold German, voted on the voting board in the body of Town Hall and on the House of Representatives. So now I have his application.
Father God, Lord, we just thank you for this night, thank you for this opportunity to be able to come and to, to come and to work for our town tonight, Father. So, Lord, first, we wanted to, first of all, ask for your grace and your mercy for your healing, because indeed, Lord God, your archangel, we're often a God who heals. And we're asking for healing for Councilman Moon and Councilwoman McBad, Father. They both have ailments and illnesses that are going on, Father, that you need to heal, and you need to touch in their lives, move in their lives tonight, Father. And, and, Lord God, for our town council tonight, and even our administrators tonight, Father, that you give them the words of wisdom, the knowledge they need to be able to lead our town tonight, Father, that, Lord God, that you would be with us, you'd watch over it, Father. Help us, Lord God, indeed. There are many requests tonight, so, Father, we're coming to you, Lord God, to hold a shower of God provision, open up the doors of windows of heaven, Father, and shower down blessings upon our town and mother council. Just touch us and be with us, Lord, and we ask this in Jesus' name, and amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the beloved which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a couple of young men that we want to recognize tonight. First, Isaiah Perdett. Isaiah, thirteen, winner of the South Carolina Division three thousand and one fifty meter races. He went to the British and eighth championship in both races, in Augusta, Georgia. He went on to compete in Olympic, Junior Olympics in the Boyden Island. He placed twenty-seventh in the nation in the fifteen, fifteen meter, fifteen hundred meter race at four thirty-five. And then the Chris Island Race was pushed from Sefton, and bruised, and upset at this point, and he finished the race. Isaiah runs with the Smarter Track, Elite Track Fund, coached by George Victor Carroll. He's running for the Carroll Home School of Cougars, team of cross-country season. On behalf of myself, Town Council, I award you this fact, outstanding junior student award, Isaiah Perdett. We have another, outstanding young man, Ray Turner. Ray, the rising self-bearer, is a self-bearer now, and Coach Bill Lindstrom, who selected the centerfield, who represented the Team USA in twelve-under, Baseball World Cup in Taiwan, and is back in July. He was one of the eighteen baseball players selected, and only player from Southeast selected. Lifted as four foot nine inches and eighty pounds, because we were talking about him. Ray is the smallest player on the team. The Team USA won the games against Chinese Taipei, Venezuela, Czechia, South Korea, Panama, and New Zealand, and secured places in the world championship final. The USA defeated Chinese Taipei ten to four in the world championship final, to win the gold medal. On behalf of myself, Town Council, I award you the outstanding junior student award, Ray Turner. Any others coming? Approve of the minutes of August third, twenty twenty-three?
Make a motion we approve the minutes of August third, twenty twenty-three, all in favor?
Approve the minutes of August eighth, twenty twenty-three?
I say it.
Most may it second to approve the minutes of August eighth, twenty twenty-three, all in favor? Approve the minutes of August eighth, twenty twenty-three?
I say it.
Most may it second to approve the minutes of August eighth, twenty twenty-three, all in favor? Back to you, Mr. Mayor. We have been back to order. No action taken, except the second. Go on with the community matter, old business, that's clear, right? Second, per se, the amendment, ordinance, twenty, twenty-four, twenty-four. And thank you.
You've approved ordinance twenty, twenty-three dash oh four. This amendment makes two corrections. One, there was a digit correction, I believe, and a tax number, and then the other one is to also add on the annexation of Hemingrove Road from the last portion of this property out to Cherokee, approximately eight hundred feet.
Make a motion be approved, the amendment to ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh four.
Yes, second.
Would you like to hear from me?
I say it. Most may it second to amend the ordinance twenty, twenty-three dash oh four, and it takes.
Yeah, I just, I want to make sure that, Paul, you, you looked at all of this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, actually, I made the amendments to it, just adopting the, Hemingrove Road, right?
Yeah.
Just adopt that eight hundred thirty-three feet, whatever, Hemingrove Road.
Okay, that's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure. So you, you looked over at it, good job.
He took what we had before, and then actually made all the amendments, not to...
All the changes, I guess, he made, and spread them out. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that the additions were, you know, okay.
And you business, I'm trying to come up with a motion to say, for the per se amendment, any other question, all in favor? Moving on to you, business. Presentation of Steve Blake, our financial...
As you'll probably know, we've been working with Stephen Blake, CPA, doing transition of our financial system, and overhauling a lot of stuff, and we've had some questions recently about financial statements. And so I figured it'd be great to have him come here and explain exactly what he's doing for the town. He can also have some recommendations that we don't have to approve tonight, but we can look through them, but I'll go and have Mr. Blake come here.
Thanks, Mr. K. Good evening, council. It's my task this evening to kind of update you on what we've been doing in the accounting office here at Town Paco. And as Mr. K stated, we're totally overhauling the accounting system. When I got here, I was tasked with looking at it, determining what needed to be done, and essentially, what we're doing and have been doing for the last couple of months. The software you've got is fine, it was not well-designed, the chart of accounts, how you report, how you get information out of the system, which is what an accounting system's really supposed to do, is work for you. And what I found was, it didn't have recording formats, it didn't have all the accounting numbers set up correctly, and what we have decided, Ms. Kirby and myself, is it would be better to start from scratch. One of the problems the accounting software had was you actually had the incorrect fiscal year set up. So Ms. Kirby was doing a yeoman's job, doing two closeouts a year, which is, one's bad enough, two is a lot of work, unnecessary work, as a matter of fact. And so, we're going to set up a new town to eliminate that difficulty, that problem, with a new chart of accounts that will give you push-button reporting. So when you really want a budget actual report, you can't get one out of your current system. It has to be massaged and reworked to get a budget actual report out of the system you have. Now, with the new system, you can touch a button, you'll get a budget actual report on several funds. The current system only has one fund, the general fund. All the other things you do are kind of over here, over there. It'll all be in one system now. Everything will be tracked, start to finish, in one system. So we're fixing some of the difficulties we have encountered in working with that system that you have. You'll be in a lot more control of your financial statement. One of the things that is in your package tonight, for instance, is a page from your financial statement that is your capitalization policy. This capitalization policy, we could find no record where any town council recent or past has adopted this policy. Now, as governments, which in my jargon is what you guys are, you're the governance role for the financial statement, for the accounting process, governance makes policy decisions, can find no record of this particular policy being decided on. Now, there are many options out there. They have picked some options for you in here. There's highlights in this handout, and there's bold printing in this handout. There's where you have options. What we like to see, and I'm speaking now with my auditor hat on, as your independent auditor, if I were coming in and auditing your financial statement, what we would like to see is be able to track these policies back to council action. We would like to be able to have a representative, in fact, we're required to have a representative of governments to talk to about the audit and these financial policies. We couldn't find where any town council ever voted this policy, so what I'm recommending is two things, really, that you guys consider. First of all, you need that representation of governance for the audit function. I would highly recommend you establish a finance committee, a working committee of this council, to delve into, to do a deep dive on this particular option and disclosure here, gather all the information you need, and the finance committee then would do a deep dive on this and bring it back to council for a vote. And so the second thing is, policies like this, where councils should have input, you actually take responsibility as governance for your particular role in deciding the policies that the Town Paco follows for financial representation. I just ironically had a meeting this morning, it's called the Current Issues Update, Present Issues Update. Ninety percent of the municipalities in the state of South Carolina are not in compliance with financial reporting to the state. You're required to send an audit report in to the State Treasurer's Office within thirteen months of your year-end. They monitor that. If you don't do that, they put you on, literally, a flashing list on their website. And what you're required to do is get that financial statement in. Ninety percent are out of compliance, and what I learned this morning was, CPAs in South Carolina are getting out of the governmental auditing business. They're having so many hassles because they don't have the representation from council that they need, they don't have the responsibility at the government's level, no one is there. They're having to make a lot of these decisions themselves and doing things that they don't, should not be doing. So I highly recommend for you guys to set up a finance committee, take that governance perspective, and, now, does that sound like something you would, and I can help with that, you guys can find, is that something you feel like is worthy of your time?
Yeah.
It would be best if you had someone who could understand accounting jargon, or would be willing to learn, you know, capitalization policy is a couple of words, but it means a lot of things. For instance, it means, how long are the useful lives of the assets? What do you consider a capital asset? What do you consider an expendable asset, something I'm going to use and throw away? You know, cars and buildings are capital assets, calculators and computers are probably not. But you make that decision, they can be if you want to. And it also means you don't track the smaller equipment, it just means you don't put that equipment in your financial statement and report on it every year, and then an auditor has to audit it. So those are kind of some of the discussions and decisions this finance committee would be making. Now, with that being said, I also want to give you a timeline. We just this morning finished, actually this afternoon, finished a balance sheet, new chart of accounts, mapping it from the old system to the new system. The next couple of weeks, we're going to be working on the revenue and the expense accounts, mapping them from the old system to the new system. In the conversion process, which a conversion can take from hours to months, I think we're going to do hours in a few weeks, but in the conversion process, you've got to run parallel for a while. You don't want to give up the old system until you get the new system working, so we're going to run parallel. But I'm estimating mid-October, we should have all the bugs worked out, at the latest, early November, all the bugs worked out, and literally, touch of a button, reporting. You want to know the general fund expended tour versus budget, touch of a button, you'll have a report. That's what we're designing, it's scalable, so if you want to add more funds or more accounts to it, it's scalable, and it's designed to enlarge and fit things in in a design rather than hot chocolate. So it is a working model that I think you'll be able to use for a number of years.
Oh, good question. When we came to see expenditures lying on each month, was that something as a council we would like to see every month when we come? Because before, we have had nothing to look at, the expenses. It's just been coming off the budget, you know?
Yeah, what I would like, based on that question, is a finance committee input, as we're designing this system, the quicker the better, as we're in the throes of designing. What are your needs? We need to design this system to meet your needs as well. What would you like to see? Now, Mr. K is very familiar with what is going on in accounting, in governmental accounting in particular, and he's had a lot of input in how he wants to see reporting and how he wants to manage budgets. But we don't have a finance committee to talk to the Town Council, which would then be able to share your concerns and what you would like to see. Because again, you're governments, it's very important to meet your needs with this system as well. That is an excellent question. I would send that on through, so it gets to Ms. Kirby and I, as we're working on this project, to make sure we include your needs as well.
That was going to be my question, is, is, what, the finance committee had essentially allowed, because you're working on the system, building the system?
I think, based on that question, it is imperative that this be something you guys can decide on like ASAP, and have input into this reporting system, so we meet your needs as well. Any other questions? Because I'm here for you.
If you're going to inform the committee, I want to be able to, I don't think there's anything you need to talk about.
I think it's important, the finance committees have people that understand financial science, business and government, I think that's important, understand the numbers in my jargon, I think that's what they do. Can we decide about Josephine and Lyderyn?
Well, I don't know what else they can do, I don't know. I don't think either one of them did as us going ahead and doing it, do you?
I don't think so.
Anybody can make a difference, I would like to do it. We can go ahead and form one tonight. Y'all make one.
I mean, there is no set model of how to do it. You can ask for volunteers, you can appoint specific people, there's no set model, because again, governments, it's your policies, how you decide to work as a unit. And so whatever your policy is, whatever you decide, again, from our perspective, and again, I'm wearing my auditor profession hat, we've got to have that outlet to talk to. You know, we work with your management, we work for you, that's who really hires the auditor, is you guys. And when your auditor comes to you and talks about the audit report, you don't want the first time you're hearing about your audit report to be in a public meeting like this. You want to be part of that whole process, from the selection of the auditor all the way through to the last moment, and then this is kind of a stamp of approval when they present the report in public. But you want to be involved in that process from beginning to end, because there's certain things that an auditor requires from you, and feedback even start the audit.
We have the last one, we had, we had a business partner say, I'm not going to go in depth, you want in-depth, I'll do it.
Yeah, which you didn't have the finance committee, you couldn't go in any depth, really.
Unless you call them.
Yeah.
Okay. You bonding? How do you?
No, I don't know what else wants to do.
Probably three, probably three others. You.
Sure.
Okay. Three, three.
I don't know what you...
One of the things...
You can have a talk with the table.
Yeah, one of the things, Mr. Mayor, you want to be very careful of, and again, Freedom of Information Act is a law that applies to any and all. You don't want to have a majority of the council on your finance committee, because if you have a majority, then any action you take is a majority act. So you want to make sure you leave your committees where they can work without having to get public notices and readings and all that kind of stuff. So you do want to have a minority, yeah.
Yeah, three's, three's not a majority.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just pointing that out, you don't want to, you know, throw a few more on there.
I think, I think it's fair to be, we maybe ask Councilman Moon if that later, if they would like to be in holding on.
And you, quite frankly, can set it, I mean, it's up to you, you can set it to where you have a chairman and some people rotating in and out, it's a committee of three, and she could show up one meeting and you could show up the next, but continuity of at least one member must be there.
How soon you need to get that information back?
I would say that drop dead deadline is mid-October, so you've got about a month to get this thing going. And I would love, if you form the committee tonight, I would love to get with you at your earliest convenience to start giving you some information and allowing you time to digest it, ask questions, and then make decisions, because this policy will need to come back before the full council, and they will need to vote on it.
Yeah, well, that was the reason I was asking, you know, I knew you probably needed to serve this person.
Well, the main thing we need by mid-October is going to be her question brought to power, and in anyone else's input on what would I like to see out of my accounting system. This policy will be in your audited financial statement, so at the point in time the audit gets procured, finished, and the publishing of the document, this policy will need to be acted on. That could be, you know, a month from now to six months from now, just depends on how your procurement of the audit process goes. Keeping in mind, CPAs in South Carolina are getting out of the governmental auditing business, it may be our final.
Yeah.
What do you do with that? Is that a cost for them?
That, that is what they're talking about. If you can even find one in-state, they'll do it. Some people come from out-of-state to do it, they're still interested, but a lot of in-state people are getting out of the governmental auditing business.
All right, we'll await some information, we'll start looking.
Financial statement and report on it every year and then auditor has to audit. So those are kind of some of the discussions and decisions this finance committee would be making. Now with that being said, I also want to give you a timeline. We just this morning finished, actually this afternoon, finished a balance sheet, new chart of accounts, mapping it from the old system to the new system. The next couple of weeks, we're going to be working on the revenue and the expense accounts, mapping them from the old system to the new system. In the conversion process, which a conversion can take from hours to months, I think we're going to do hours in a few weeks. But in the conversion process, you've got to run parallel for a while. You don't want to give up the old system until you get the new system working, so we're going to run parallel. But I'm estimating mid-October, we should have all the bugs worked out at the latest early November, all the bugs worked out and literally touch of a button reporting. You want to know the general fund expended towards budget, touch of a button, you'll have a report. That's what we're designing. It's scalable, so if you want to add more funds or more accounts to it, it's scalable and it's designed to enlarge and fit things in in a design rather than hotshot. So it is a working model that I think you'll be able to use for a number of years.
When we came to see expenditures lying on each month, was that something as a council we would like to see every month when we come? Because before, we have had nothing to look at, the expenses. It's just been coming off the budget.
Yeah, what I would like, based on that question, is a finance committee input as we're designing this system, the quicker the better, as we're in the throes of designing. What are your needs? We need to design this system to meet your needs as well. What would you like to see? Now, Mr. Kay is very familiar with what is going on in accounting and governmental accounting in particular, and he's had a lot of input in how he wants to see reporting and how he wants to manage budgets. But we don't have a finance committee to talk to the town council, which would then be able to share your concerns and what you would like to see. Because again, your governance, it's very important to meet your needs with this system as well. That is an excellent question. I would send that on through so it gets to Ms. Kirby and I as we're working on this project to make sure we include your needs as well.
That was going to be my question, is the finance committee that essentially allows, because you're working on the system, building the system?
I think based on that question, it is imperative that this be something you guys can decide on like ASAP and have input into this reporting system so we meet your needs Any other questions? Because I'm here for you.
If you form a committee, I don't think there's anything we need to talk about.
I think it's important, the finance committees have people that understand financial science, business and government, I think that's important, understand the numbers like East of New York, I think that's what they give. Can we decide about Josephine?
Well, I don't know what else they can do. I don't know. I don't think either one of them did us going ahead and doing it, do you?
I don't think so.
Anybody that they do it, I would like to go with them. We can go ahead and form one tonight. Y'all want to make one?
I mean, there is no set model of how to do it. You can ask for volunteers, you can appoint specific people. There's no set model, because again, governments, it's your policies, how you decide to work as a unit. And so whatever your policy is, whatever you decide, again, from our perspective, and again, I'm wearing my auditor profession hat, we've got to have that outlet to talk to. You know, we work with your management, we work for you. That's who really hires the auditor, is you guys. And when your auditor comes to you and talks about the audit report, you don't want the first time you're hearing about your audit report to be in a public meeting like this. You want to be part of that whole process from the selection of the auditor all the way through to the last moment, and then this is kind of a stamp of approval when they present the report in public. But you want to be involved in that process from beginning to end, because there's certain things that an auditor requires from you and feedback even start the audit.
We have the last one we had, we had a business partner say, I'm not going to go in depth, you want in-depth audio?
Yeah, which you didn't have the finance committee, you couldn't go in any depth, really.
Unless you call them.
Yeah.
Okay. You bonding?
Yes.
How many?
Not a million, neither do Alex wants to.
Probably three, probably three others. You.
Sure.
Okay.
Thirty-three.
I don't believe you.
One of the things...
This can have a toll for the taking?
Yeah, one of the things, Mr. Mayor, you want to be very careful of, and again, Freedom of Information Act is a law that applies to any and all. You don't want to have a majority of the council on your finance committee, because if you have a majority, then any action you take is majority act. So you want to make sure you leave your committees where they can work without having to get public notices and readings and all that kind of stuff. So you do want to have a minority.
Yeah, three's not a majority.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just pointing that out, you don't want to throw a few more on there.
I think it's fair to be, we maybe ask councilmen later if they would like to get hold of it.
And you, quite frankly, can set it, I mean, it's up to you. You can set it to where you have a chairman and some people rotating in and out. It's a committee of three and she could show up one meeting and you could show up the next, but continuity of at least one member must be there.
How soon you need to get that information back?
I would say that drop dead deadline is mid-October, so you've got about a month to get this thing going. And I would love, if you form the committee tonight, I would love to get with you at your earliest convenience to start giving you some information and allowing you time to digest it, ask questions, and then make decisions. Because this policy will need to come back before the full council and they will need to vote.
Yeah, well, that was the reason I was asking, you know, I knew you probably needed to serve this person.
Well, the main thing we need by mid-October is going to be her question brought to power and in anyone else's input on what would I like to see out of my accounting system. This policy will be in your audited financial statement, so at the point in time the audit gets procured, finished, and the publishing of the document, this policy will need to be acted on. That could be, you know, a month from now to six months from now, just depends on how your procurement of the audit process goes. Keeping in mind, CPAs in South Carolina are getting out of the governmental auditing business, it may be our final.
Yeah. What do you do with that?
What's that?
You've got to cost it for them.
That is what they're talking about. If you can even find one in-state that will do it, some people come from out-of-state to do it, they're still interested, but a lot of in-state people are getting out of the governmental auditing business.
All right, we'll await some information, we'll start later.
Excellent. And you can always reach me through, Mr. Kay, I will be happy to respond to any questions you have. Just, I'm working for you, I work with your management, but I work for you guys. No more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Prove the Capitol Basin policy.
I'll say, Mr. Blake has been awesome to work with, very professional, and we very much enjoyed his time, both Ms. Kirby and his travel. He's been very great to work with, excited to see what the potential changes are coming forward. Everything the council wants, at the point of collect, we'll be able to have that. The Considerable First Reading Amendment to ordinance Chapter 6, Article 1 in general, this particular section on top is only a typo. When the council originally approved this back in 2019, the section on top was 6-9-5, and it should have been 6-9-50. Five references, references handicapped accessible grants that's on there. And so it's just correcting that typo that's on there.
Motion to approve amendment to ordinance Chapter 6, Article 1. Motion made second, approve the amendment to ordinance Chapter 6, Article 1, equated. All in favor?
The consideration for the amendment to Chapter 6, Article 2, Section 618, there's one change that has been done, and it's the website has been changed. Beyond that, Mr. Frost may want to give his opinion on this, but the way it states is when you say the currently adopted, well, the currently adopted at the time, and I believe it was December of 2019 when this was adopted. And I'll let Mr. Frost kind of explain this a little more, but it's basically giving up your future ability. Is the council of 2019 saying that you are currently, every year currently, approving this? And the way Mr. Frost explained this was, is that the council is giving up, is removing the right of that particular council at the time. And so what he is recommending is that every year that you reapprove Section 618. So if you have any questions, he would love to come up here and explain this better than anything.
I got plenty of questions. I mean, is this reapproving every year because of the way it's written?
Yeah, the ordinance says, basically, we adopt whatever LLR adopts.
Right.
And essentially, that's, the legal principle there is you're delegating your authority to LLR if you don't reapprove it. Because they will change every year when they adopt, if there's been changes. As international business codes, the various trade codes adopt and make changes, they readopt. And sort of council needs to just do the same thing. You can't leave it up to LLR to pick which law you're going to follow, but when you adopt, we adopt whatever LLR says. If you do that at least every year, just once a year, or first two years, they see that they do.
I feel like this has come up in the past, and it was basically, well, whatever they have current, what we use. I didn't really know that's what it meant.
Yeah, so like I said, this council right now, without you readopting, you're delegating to LLR to pick your ordinances, and that's, of course, it's your job, and you're right.
Would it change the works, make it worse, appear to?
I don't know that it can without readopting it every year or every couple, every year's just a good practice. They don't make changes every year to their natural ability to, for example, that's the big one. And they sometimes do it years without changing it, but it may be just a good practice to readopt it. If we're going to have an active building department and codes and permits and fees and everything, it's probably a good idea to do that. Because first thing, someone who's defending against it would come in, say, well, has faculty adopted this code, and go back and look, and council said, every many years ago, we adopted LLR. You can make an argument that that only applied to rules in existence at that time.
Make a memo, make sure we do it every year, right?
That's it. Good luck, Cal.
Make a motion, we approve amendment to ordinance, Chapter 6, Article 2, Section 6-18.
Second. Well, the main is that about the ordinance, Chapter 6, Article 2, Section 618, code adopted, equated, on paper, October.
This next section is considered first reading on amendment to ordinance 6, Article 3, Section 619, standard unsafe building, making code adopted. This is a recommendation obtained from Brian Blackwell there, originally after International Property Maintenance Code, it referenced the 2015 edition, and he recommended changing that to approve the 2021 edition.
So that previous change, that cover that?
I...
We need to change 6-1-9 every year also?
No, no, no. Six, the previous one is by reference to LLR, that's why that one. This one, your passing, say, this is what we're doing.
So whenever they change the license of International Property Maintenance Code, whenever there's a new addition, we'll have to go revise 6-1-9?
If you know there's a, yeah, of that one.
Yes.
Looking at this, the previous codes, I mean, the ordinance that we are distributing, those are mandatory codes that LLR says we have to adopt. The 2021 International Property Maintenance Code is considered a permitted code and must be adopted individually. That's, I know what you're saying, maybe, that's the way they work it to laws. Any questions?
Make a motion. Make a motion, we amend ordinance, Chapter 6, Article 3, Section 6-19.
Second. Motion made second, any questions? All in favor? All opposed? Twenty-three of the ordinance, 28, 23, that's 05.
There's the ordinance to consider approving a fee schedule, creating a new ordinance in the section, it'll be Section 6-1, approving the fee schedule for building permits, it'll be made in 6-1. If you have any questions on this, the best person is going to be Mr. Blackwell to come up and discuss with you on this, what the need is for this, and also it's going to you the need for the project evaluations as well. If you have any questions for us.
Any questions?
I got a question. We recently been talking about the process and the time that it takes to complete these and the issues that are involved with evaluation, project evaluation ahead, is that part of that? Or is that, it seems to take a long time for people to get the permits and get the ball rolling on the project? I don't think, I know we talked at one point about streamlining this a little bit. Is this streamlined or is this?
Yes, I actually reworked this to streamline, and I think I followed on the question and make it more user-friendly. I guess that is what we're trying to accomplish, but this is...
Well, I'm just going to kind of maybe just briefly read it, what he did, because I know the last several permits that come before RCI took months to get, ordinarily, if you went to Sparkville Kelly, it would be like the minute today too. And it was drug out, and drug out, and drug out, you know, which put the people who needed the permit way behind until they were going to be getting done, complaining, because it threw them off the table. So I too am trying to understand why it is that it takes so long, or shouldn't take so long to work before Sparkville Kelly doesn't take that long to give a permit or to ask for so many details, and then even when you're given those details, it was so long before they were even gotten back to, they were just like, hung out there. You know, I don't think that needs to happen to anyone here. You know, I have emails here that went back and forth too young, with the delay of them getting permits. And I don't know what the law was, which should be...
Do you share with us what we have seen, or?
No, you haven't.
Okay.
This was when you had another representative in this area. And that was emails that she referred to, but there were times where, I believe it was around eighty, almost ninety days, that it took for that particular person to respond back in permit to this.
And it wasn't just him, it was also had to do with a couple of businesses at hand. So it wasn't just him, those others were...
Mr. Blackwell, the fee schedule, is that, is that something, the actual fees themselves, is that something you put together from your experience with other towns?
Yes.
That's comparable for this area?
Rock, towns of this size, town of McDonald's, town of Arcadia Lakes.
So we're falling right in the middle there at the average?
I don't think my question will answer. So how long should it take that someone puts in for a permit?
It takes me forty-eight hours. Providing they provide their collection. I have a packet for you guys to address from the plate, only if we have time and y'all want to look at it tonight. But I have to give to you and take on and talk about it, or we won't talk about it, that's to the end, you guys. Be glad to.
This new construction of these houses, your problem, did it take them to get a permit?
It probably took them, we have a check list, we give them, once I handle that check list, they take them, probably took them three days to submit it, and I think I put in two hours.
See, that was for new houses, this was just for building?
You approved it in two hours?
Yes, sir.
For which house?
Both of the house.
On South Street?
Yes, sir. Four twenty, twenty-five, American Avenue. They give you what we need, we can move really quickly. We have exactly lots of guidelines for every type of digital information.
And then just...
Obviously, certain things do take longer, you know, again, I'm just, I don't know what that one.
It was just one, it's a building of concrete, it's not like new construction, which is way more, today more...
Detailed.
Detailed, that's looking at and make sure this, make sure that, all you wanted to do was build it up the same way. And that was, and even this, the others up there in emails here, definitely have a lot that took them a hundred permits for their businesses, it's just ridiculous. Even though they got in work with you, you're the one that should...
I'm the one.
Yeah.
Did you write the permits for the two houses on South Street?
I didn't write the permit, that would have been probably April, that actually wrote it, I just reviewed it.
Yeah, but you reviewed and approved it, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. In our zoning ordinances, it says, "Pacquiao Mill's historic district overlay zone is used to protect the character of the historic mill village. Any changes to district structures, including renovations, additions, demolitions, new construction, et cetera, must be reviewed by the historic architectural review board according to the design guidelines of Pacquiao Mills." I never even knew that they were applying for permits. I had no idea that they were even talking about building houses on that block. You would think if our, if our ordinances say that it must be reviewed because of the district that it's in, it must be reviewed by a board that we don't currently have, the council would at least be aware. Would you agree?
I have nothing to do with zoning, sir. I don't even read the book.
So you don't look at the zoning and do approved permits?
No, sir. I had to go off.
Who's responsible for that?
I'm responsible for that.
Did you review this?
I reviewed the zoning ordinance and it was approved in the zoning ordinance. We do not currently have a historical board, or have we had one or past the town, or is that at least fifteen, ten or fifteen years?
Ten or fifteen years, we have, yeah, we have had one, ten or fifteen. Have we had any new houses built, ten or fifteen years, in the historic district? My question is, is that's part of the zoning ordinances, I just want to make sure that we do look at that moving forward. If we're not going to have a board, then we need to change the zoning ordinance. But it still needs to be reviewed to make sure the historic district is kept where it is.
Yeah, that's a lot of work Elaine Harris put into a historic district, or a stuff that even been followed, or a review board there.
Yeah, there's not a review board.
You know, probably these people died off or whatever, and then these council members came on, it wasn't paid attention to or whatever, but I still think it should have been profitable council, because I know, at least the miscellaneous, I mean, as Josephine was here during that time, and would have known from the get-go, hey, you know, this is historical, we need to look at, you know, how they're building it, what they're building it, you know.
I think we should be looking at that, but, you know, moving forward, you know, what we're got in front of us here is, you know, the permits and all what we need to approve or not.
Fee schedule?
Yeah, fee schedule.
I think we mostly approved the fee schedule.
Second. Motion made second, any questions? All in favor? Thank you, Brian.
Next item on the agenda is the Consider Approving the Southland Department of Public Justice Agreement Agreement. I remember this from a year ago, this was something we already approved, it's agreed to, if we have two homes to go that are listed, that they bring to the price at which they will charge the town to house them. This is a standardized agreement that the town has reviewed and looked at, but has approved every rule at least since last time I was there.
There's been a few changes or anything like that.
I'd have to look back and see, I thought it was twenty-five. What's that, fifty days, what have, twenty, fifty dollars for twenty-four hour, twenty-five for a half day.
I think most of the approved, Southland Department of Public Justice Agreement. Agreed?
Second. Motion made second, any questions? All in favor?
The next item is Considered Rest from the Pacquiao High School Reunion Committee. They are requesting a donation of two hundred fifty dollars to put towards the Pacquiao High School reunion, which is done during the same time as the River Festival. I would like for the River Festival to consider this and use this as an advertising promotion, as a lot of them may be interested in coming to the festival. It's an opportunity to advertise to those out there, which bands are coming in and how they may be interested in staying for the festival itself. So I'm recommending the council, not out of it, just I'm recommending council, let the River Festival committee decide this, out of their own judgment.
I just want...
Question?
I met several people throughout the year that had a problem, that came to me of us giving or contributing to the Pacquiao High School reunion, because, you know, they're saying that they're doing that for them, why can't they do it for these other little reunions or get togethers that people have? They just see that it's unfair.
Well, the line started back, again, years ago, you know, it's been going on for years, and they do advertise on there, sending, you know, when it's, sending out for, you know, people to... people to attend, um, they do advertise on it, uh, I got one with mail, and, uh, after, you know, tells us about the River Festival on the next day, so, you know, I don't know, you know, I don't know, you all.
Mr. Kent, what, what was your recommendation? Explain that to me, I'll pay back.
My recommendation is that the River Fest use this, is, it takes this request.
To River Fest?
Committee.
The nonprofit.
The nonprofit, the Paclet Threat, the River Fest Committee, um, pay for this out of advertising cost, because it's a way to promote the festival to people who are coming into our committee, letting them know when it is, where it is.
Do we need to approve that?
Well, as, as long as y'all are okay with that, then I'll have the, I'll bring this up with the committee.
That's what I say.
I've examined that.
It's, it's very similar to what was done to, uh, Brim High School had requ- had requested some funds for sponsorship for their football, and what I requested from council, y'all were okay with this, is that we pay for the sponsorship to Brim High School out of the River Fest, uh, Paclet Threat funds, and then they will be announcing in every single home football game, the River Fest that's coming out in the name of time, as well as putting an advertisement of the festival in their football brochures.
So the River Fest Committee will discuss this, if they want to.
Yes, sir.
We don't, you don't need to, you know, we need to have a vote on this, they, they will be considered.
No, I just said I would make a motion.
Mike? You have this?
Thanks, man. Yeah, I mean, I, I, I sent in a lot of information on, on the historic guidelines, uh, there's, there's a good bit of information on there. I just want each council member to have copies, so they can take the time to read through. If there's any questions, you know, there's a, a bunch of, um, there's a bunch of information here, and there's a good bit of questions and answers, you know, so if you're, if you're, um, if one of your questions would be like, hey, can they restrict me from doing this? You know, there's a lot of black and white, and it's not really, it's not really, um, a yes or no thing. There's, there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of, uh, things that can be done, there's a lot of things that can't be done, but it's very few and far between. Anyway, I, I just put the information up there so everybody can take a look at it and kind of review it. I've been asked by a lot of people in my district to, to have the council review this again, and, and just, just review it, and then maybe we'll have a vote on it at some point, but I, I think, I think anyone who's given a good month to review the information, you know, would be a good, good thing.
Did we skip an item here?
Yeah.
I think you, I think you just skipped an item.
Well, we don't come here, I'm sorry.
Well, I would steal something that you had.
Yeah, yeah, you brought this. It was, I got it wrong, uh, same way, okay, so the, the other one, the historic preservation fund grant. So, um, this is something that I, I sent in, and, and I, I was hoping that we could get started on this ASAP, because the grant runs out, uh, pretty quick, I would say it's, um, October sixth. So, in other words, if everybody would agree to allow our administrator to pursue this grant.
If we need a vote, I'll make a motion. If we need a vote for this.
Yeah, we are, uh, back in two thousand nineteen, uh, this board, this, uh, um, this council agreed to, uh, let, uh, uh, Ms. Cale in, in a group, and I was one of those in that group, to fix, uh, the outside of that, uh, thing, and, uh, Mr. Wright, in two thousand, June two thousand nineteen, made a motion, uh, to approve this, and, uh, uh, and council, um, unanimously agreed, and, uh, Bob Morris, the, uh, um, town administrator at that time, did not get back to debt with us, and we thought it would've been dropped, and then nobody ever getting back to debt with us, and, um, so, you know, uh-huh, but I think, you know, going forward with, uh, you know, the, uh, historic preservation fund grant would be good, uh, you know, we could do that and maybe get the inside and outside done.
Yeah, I, I got a list of, of improvements and stuff that, that meets all the criteria for a grant, and it's a very sizable grant.
I don't remember that, didn't, didn't, um, Captain, he already had the patent or something?
You know, we, you know, I was, you know, definitely before I even considered being, you know, a, a running for, for mayor, and I, I was gonna give him the paint, and, uh, and we were gonna clean everything, um, and Bob, and then Robert, the, uh, Bob, that you were with, uh...
To do this, we need to have a cost estimate up here, um, so if y'all don't mind, I'd like to reach out to Matt Coe and fast, as, as the one who actually provide the estimate on the work on the exterior, but we will have to have some type of cost estimate to provide to them, uh, and I, there, there will probably be a matching amount in there. Does it mention on there that a matching amount for the town, is it a hundred percent? Usually not a hundred percent. Either way, I've already reached out to the COG, uh, City Actuality Council of Governments will do grants free for us, uh, and so I've already given them kind of a heads up that council will hopefully, probably be approving the, moving forward of this, so they're already aware of it, and they're already doing some research on there, but if you don't mind, you can reach out to Matt Coe, or if you have another contractor in mind to give, we've got a preliminary estimate on the windows and paint on the exterior, uh, but I'll go ahead and have kind of an idea of what the cost will be for HVAC plumbing, electrical, that sort of thing.
Yeah, just a, a generalized cost, you know, for, we can separate it out, or just, you know, whatever they, if we didn't award for it, that's very... This, this, this thing is up to seventy-five thousand dollars.
If, if you would like, I could try to schedule that contractor meeting with Matt Coe or whoever with you, because I walk in there and, you know, if you see my last house in Griffin, I completely overown everything. The town may not want to do that much.
I, I think, I think meeting with me would be great, but I think Ms. Josephine should be there as well.
Okay.
I think this, I didn't go to school there, I don't have history there. Uh, Ms. Josephine has, um, news there, I, I would rather her be there and kind of get her input, as far as what she would like to see done, or really not like to see done. If the windows need to stay because they're the old style, that's fine.
Back when Bob was, uh, I'm interested in you, but, uh, back when Bob Morris was, uh, the town administrator, he met with us over there in Star, um, whatever it is. Yeah, she, she met with us, okay, she was one, uh, the, the citizen we had met with, and, um, you know, I think, you know, we should, you know, but, you know, and it just, you know, it was just plain to meet with him, I think it would be good idea to do.
And there may be restrictions on the grant because of his, because of where the dollars come from, that he, he can't be spent on vinyl windows, may have to be spent on wood clad windows.
With the historical, you know, you would, and have restrictions on some of those stuff. If we had to, we had to, you can't, we need another one?
Yeah.
Okay, Mike? Donald, you have it?
I'll make a motion, uh, we apply for historic reservation fund grant for a big baseball school. You got a second?
Most made a second. Any questions?
Yeah.
What question on there is, I, I may need to come back to you once we figure out the total cost estimate, and then what the matching is, because then council, if the matching is two hundred thousand dollars, or the matching is twenty-five thousand dollars, big difference.
For that, yeah.
So I'll come back to you, and I may have to call a meeting to do that.
What is the grant's status before it starts being?
The only thing is, is sometimes with, uh, with the COG, is they don't want to be doing this at the last minute.
Okay.
So they want to know as soon as possible if council's willing to put the money for it, and if not, they're not gonna write the grant.
Right, yeah.
So when is the grant closed, closing time?
Okay. Let's see, I'm talking about, I believe it's, it's, uh, ten, twelve.
So will that be before, that'd be after next meeting?
It will be, but the COG will need to know much earlier than the...
Okay, when, when do you think you could have that information?
Give me a week, we can have it.
Yeah, so maybe a quick, maybe in two weeks.
And y'all may want to do a quick meeting in two weeks to, to assess reading on that amendment for the annexation, depending on where that grant is.
Okay.
Our, yes, we, most made a second, approved, any, anyway, all in favor? All in favor? This is here, uh, this is, uh, this is, uh, discussed, code of conduct.
I have been upped by several citizens and constituents, uh, asking me have I seen conversations on social media regarding some council members being appointed officials, which I know, I have on Facebook, I have posted there, um, so, uh, we've shown some things that I, I were kind of disturbed. So I thought, uh, that we might need to be reminded of our code of conduct as council members being appointed officials. In two thousand nineteen, we adopted the Town Paclet Code of Conduct for elected and appointed officials. Um, and I'll knock me if y'all have a copy, I have some here, I want to take one test real. Also, uh, when we are elected, we take an oath of office, which says, "All elected and appointed officers of state's political sub-dissions before entering their respective offices shall take and subscribe the following oath of office from any person authorized to append your oath as a judge or military republi." And that oath is, "I do solemnly swear or affirm that I am duly qualified according to the Constitution of this state to exercise the duties of the office to which I have been elected and do receive, and that I will to, as in my ability, discharge the duties thereof and preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state and of the United States so that we govern. In addition to the oath prescribed by the Constitution, the mayor and council members must take the following oath of office, section five, statute two, statute one fifty. As mayor and or council member of the municipality of the community of Town of Paclet, I will equally, fairly, and impartially, to the best my ability and skill, exercise the trust imposed in me in all matters my best endeavors to preserve the peace and carry into it according to the law the purposes for which I have been elected so have the government. I also want to point out in the Town Paclet Code of Conduct for elected and appointed officials, um, there are three deposit verse. Code of Conduct members, members shall refrain from abusive conduct, personal charges, or verbal attacks upon the character or motives of other members, the staff, or, or public. Members shall practice civility and decor during public debate. And then on the last page, be the ability and sanctions. Acknowledgement of Code of Conduct. Acknowledgement and acceptance of this Code of Conduct is volunteered. All council members and appointed officials are encouraged to execute the same in order to foster a positive environment and to promote fair and impartial governance, behavior, and conduct. The Town Code of Conduct expresses standards of conduct expected for members of the Town Council, boards, committees, and commissions. Members themselves have the primary responsibility to assure that ethical standards are understood and met, and that the public can continue to have full confidence and integrity of government. These are some things as adults and council members that we really should not have to be told to do, or have to really read, um, our Code of Conduct, to, we, we represent the Town of Paclet, and we ourselves should be able to conduct ourselves in that manner, because we represent the Town. We have, uh, I don't know how many social medias out there regarding Paclet. I think the first one pointed out to me, there might be seven or eight, which is crazy, maybe, we like to say, I don't know, on there, but they were quite offended, embarrassed, a little bit humiliated, and some of the things that they were reading, that some council members being appointed, uh, officials were conversating on the web, these websites, and asked that I speak, which I said, yes, I will, and I just wanted to remind everyone of who we are and what our duties are. Also, in Roberts rules, border states, all the ordinary society's civic application to discipline members of organizations or assembly has the ultimate right to make and enforce its own rules, and to require that its members refrain from conduct injurious injuries to the organization or its purposes. So with all this said, I, I hope that we can leave tonight and go out of here and remember who we are as council members, and, and, and to watch what we say and do and behave, because it's not just the Town of Paclet, it's people who visit our website, and when they put in Paclet, or do searches, from what I understand too, all this other stuff comes up, and they read that. So it, it doesn't look good on us as council members, and the Town that we're supposed to be representing us as council members. But I think that's all I have to say.
Well, we're just saying, I think, you know, we should live up to those standards, and live up to our Code of Conduct on the hallway, and, uh, as I can, you know, please, we have here, I think we should, you know, live up to the Code of Conduct.
Well, well, I'm thinking, we just signed that, I know it was different, but, yeah, this is a little, yeah, yeah.
What else can we hear, I mean, it is, uh, outside, but, yeah.
Yeah.
You were, I would maybe, you know, remind you of that.
It does say, in addition to Code of Conduct, so if you're not good with you, by the time, I'll get it as well.
We might need to update some of that, I mean, I mean, you know, update some of that.
Well, I just think, it says we should review it, so I think that's a good, it's a good review, it's a good review, so.
Uh, I, I, I think so, because I think that, I mean, I know that there, there, there are the, um, some repercussions to that, you know, maybe there is, um, what's on the, I don't know, so...
Says reprimand.
Repromen, yeah.
Divided by Roberts.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think for Roberts rules of order, reprimands are pretty generic throughout, it's, for council members and citizens here, and for appointees, it would be very distinct, including removal from...
Well, in, in each municipality, we have a right to say what we...
Right. And this is governed by itself.
Right. But I, I, I think, and, we can put that in there, and also too, it needs to be enforced.
Well, yeah, I think, you know, we can enforce it, if, uh, you know, we need to probably look over it, update, and, uh, and, you know, going forward, we can, for that, that's, they...
Uh, before I go to this, uh, there's something that came up earlier that, uh, I wanted to make sure that we go over. Uh, we had talked about in the past, I believe, about updating the courtroom and council chambers, and we'll redesign, uh, and we really need to get on that, if y'all would like me to hire somebody to come out and design something, uh, but we had kind of talked about a layout here, um, we potentially could use, uh, funding through MARPA, um, and that deadline will be coming sooner than we think, uh, but I'd like for us to remember... Uh, but I'd like for us to remember this. If y'all would like, I can go ahead and do a design and build. Uh, design and build has to be approved by council, uh, before we even move forward on that. I just want to get your opinion on that, uh, where we are with that, how, how y'all want to proceed, or don't, don't want to proceed.
Well, that's, it's funny you, you mention that because I have that on comments that I want to mention because I know the last time I asked that, it was like, we're waiting to see, to hire the chief and see how he wanted to do this and do that, and then it just keeps getting drawn, keeps getting brought, nothing is getting going. Even as far as the security in here, our cameras are being, you know, we keep noise talking.
In, in reverse, the, the cameras, the wiring has been installed, and as far as I know, um,
They're coming tomorrow.
They're coming tomorrow to finish those. We've already have the app, um, available for that, but, um, that is finalizing. As soon as they finish that, uh, they'll be going up to P D, uh, and give it their setup.
So that's on security.
That won't let one of you guys, uh?
Those are for the interior and exterior cameras, and there will be, uh, five on the exterior of the building, so four sides, then also the lower level. Uh, will be a camera here, and then also a camera in the back.
Oh, along the line is not going to be exactly, but, uh, the building up there, the rescue, old rescue, what building, uh, tree fall on, right? Uh, were we looking into that, uh, repairing that? We have a guy that's, uh, you know, we ask people that are here interested in if they, if we want to sell it, so, you know.
Do we sell it as is?
The store is going to categorize it.
Do I?
Selling as.
He said, he said as is, the one guy I adopted, he didn't take it as is.
That may be something the council probably couldn't consider. Uh, the building is, is in rough shape.
Yeah, and it's in rougher shape now than it is.
Correct.
Tree building.
Somebody wants to buy it?
Yeah. Yeah.
There's one less area that the, the town has to maintain, one less area they've got to cut grass on. Uh, it's up to you. It's, it's up to y'all.
Well, yeah, we can, you know.
I wanted to try to.
Yeah, we can, but, you know, I, you know, I just thought about, you know, when you were talking about remodeling, let's do.
I can bring that up to another council meeting, maybe some evaluations, um, and maybe the cost of repair and getting it up and running versus potentially some property.
I would contact a real estate agent to see what the value of the property is.
Okay.
Back to the remodeling. I know, Jason, did you do some drawings for in here for some remodeling?
Yeah, yeah. And before we talked about putting the, uh, the court down, you know, we, we ain't gonna do that, and see the check and all that, that'd be.
To have it all here at one point, court and council day?
There's been a preliminary conversation, if y'all are okay with, you know, Mr. Wright, you have, uh, have looked at some possibilities with the idea. Originally, before I got here, the dais for council was over here, but the idea is to have one wall, uh, kind of dance over here for the council, and then a center spot that would be for the judge. And then the other thing we're looking at is kind of blocking off this corner in here, uh, and locking it so that when people are coming in from the public, a lot of people who are not from Packland don't realize that we're all back there. And it would be much better, I think, if when people are coming in, they immediately go, and I think at one point, Ms. Kirby was located in that corner.
We're at the doorway, I'm just, I can get this floor.
So at this point, what we talked about, the square, you mentioned the glass box over here, uh, for, um, our assistant town clerk to be able to be located. And people can come in and pay bills, they can pay tickets, they can pay whatever they need to, and not come all the way back to the back. Uh, and then there was an idea of possibly putting a wall right here to lock things off. Um, and then, but there's the women's power room into, uh, chambers for the judge. Um, but that's just preliminary, but we need, if, if that's the direction the council wants to go, we need to draw it up and then bid this out and report with us.
I don't know, I don't even have time to talk about it really. I didn't know about that, this was the first time I heard.
And it's, and if, if y'all want to take more time thinking about it, um, but.
What, you, uh, you have any preliminary drawings or anything like that?
I have no drawings on this as far as I know. Uh, I know that talking to the chief, that court days are becoming more and more crowded, and more space is needed, and it wouldn't be able to accommodate more people in here.
I remember you ran through this with me. I really like that layout generally, and I just want to reiterate, which I, you know, you had back and forth preserving the openness and the historic look to this room in particular. There, there are discussions now, cordoning off areas, adding metal detectors, which may be necessary. My concern is that we do it a way where we preserve this kind of open welcoming space which the public hopes, and I think if we can make it work where they have continued access to, uh, that would be my belief.
So there's, it, I completely get it, and even the comment that you made about that is, is you don't want, especially in a small town, twenty-four hundred people, and you don't want the public to feel like, uh, um, that they're kind of formed into one area, they came into this other area here, that, um, I, I get that, and there, there are people who like to be able to come in and talk to the town though. Um, you don't get that in places, much larger places. But either way, whichever direction council wants to go, I just want to be able to make sure that y'all are thinking about this, and we can move forward with this, whichever direction should go rather than land. And that's all, Austin.
Well, I think you just need to discuss it because I didn't have such information.
And the only reason that he has it is he's come down, come down and looked at it, or stayed after for a council meeting, and the same thing happened with Mr. Wright, is he stayed after for a council meeting, and so I, I, I would love to talk. These are all just different ideas that are all out there, and.
I, I, I think we all, as a council, should, uh, make one in due development on that. Not other than what we had discussed previously. Well, I think, I think we just need to get together and discuss it, also, it was just a thing of nature.
Would you like to move to the next council meeting?
Well, what are we supposed to discuss? I mean, there's no drawings, there's no this.
It's, and that's the whole thing, it's just these basic sketches.
But, yeah.
I can, I can do some basic sketches with this.
But, but, I mean, I agree, I, I don't want the stuff to start being blockaded off, you know, because it does take away the, the audience that it's still.
Can you add some evidence, Dixon?
Yeah, I can, I can, I can have some basic sketches done by you next week. That's no problem.
Perfect. Uh, just want to remind council and make sure that you're hopefully reminding your constituents, and we'll also continue to remind them online to visit planpackland.com and complete the survey. Uh, thanks to our, uh, previous web designer, it's set up so that you can go to townpackland.com, it automatically pops up and you, uh, kind of have to. Um, people need to know that this is their opportunity to direct you, staff, everything of how you want to move for the next ten years. Uh, so as many, this is their opportunity, and I just want to make sure we have as many people out there feeling this out as possible.
I would have built that as a part.
I was actually going to check with, uh, the, the group today, and I forgot to do that, but I will do that, uh, tomorrow. As soon as I have that response, I'll get that out to y'all, uh, together, I'll send it to you.
And how other than just our website, are we informing the citizens of, of this? Uh, one of the things is to let them know that if a lot of people just, they live in Packland, they don't have a way to go through, they have a Packland website.
Right.
They don't know.
Uh, I've been working with the cog on this, and, um, we are looking at creating some either QR codes or posters around town, uh, and letting people know they can come up here and just fill out a paper survey, uh, and then that can be put out, um, into the, the documents, the information's out there.
You suppose maybe some of the churches, we put out pamphlets there, or in the log area, or even have something at the grocery stores, you know, or people.
The company we hired to do.
I think we had asked that.
Yeah, they, they had a bunch of different ways to deal with it, but I think at one point they were like, oh, it's like, invite the public. There's a lot of different ways. I think this is preliminary, just so they can get some, some information to, to move forward.
You're exactly right. They'll need to have some focus groups, and they'll have some opportunities to meet and talk to more people. I just want to make sure that as many people are given the opportunity to, now, if you don't want to bill the term, you don't have to.
Yeah.
But I want to make sure that if anybody says, I can get an opportunity.
Yeah, that's, that was kind of, that's what I thought the guy was telling us, is like, they, they were, this is preliminary, and then when they start doing their focus groups, that's to find out how to get out all the information to the public the best way for Packland.
But I think sooner or better, because a lot of times, even information that misses slow to move.
I agree.
You know?
It is, yeah.
It's, it's, even if they see it, it's like, one intention.
Yeah.
Um, I really put this information, there was an old bill about the, uh, uh, thousand dollars for the fishing gears cleaning things up. Um, uh, Ms. Kirby and Ms. Dan have been emailing back and forth, and I believe we have resolved this, and I think the town should go ahead and move forward and pay the thousand dollar bill. Based off of conversations, uh, the, the town clerk has had to bring this administrator, and there were some contracts and some old minutes where some of the stuff was proved. Is there anything that you want to add on that?
I don't know, what was that now, that, that bill?
That bill.
This was a thousand dollar bill that was brought up, I think, uh, at the last council meeting. And, uh, there was a bill that came up, and I made the comment, I didn't want to have a situation that anybody who just wants to break it to the town, town pays, but there was actually a agreement back then.
Okay.
Uh, I'm currently evaluating code enforcement building permitting software to streamline the process for digital time spent and increase organization. Granted, all that stuff will have to be approved by council, uh, I'm just looking at some different options out there to make this a lot easier, a lot quicker, and a lot more organization-wise, especially as it goes to court. Um, the contractor was hired to do limb pickup, has, has, is completing. Uh, he's, he has picked up a hundred and fifteen limbs, limb piles across the entire town. Uh, we had contracted only to do a hundred, so he's only going to charge us for a hundred, so he's done at this point. Uh, we posted something on Facebook letting people know that if there were any piles that were missed that we didn't see to let us know. We've collected that list, and Travis might be hitting that first on Friday. So they've got a list of about eight or ten homes that were missed from this group, and they will go out there first and run through it.
Did you, did you verify these addresses?
He's got a list, he, he went through it and looked at everything that we had, and then had an additional fifteen on top of it. We haven't paid them yet, and so he still has to provide photography and, and kind of verification of all that stuff.
And then you, you said that he would go ahead and time and verify all the locations where.
We did verify all the locations, so the, the, what the, uh, list of addresses that were provided was provided based on mine and Travis going out and identifying all the different piles that were out there.
So many of this was on the list?
There was a little over, I have to look back, I think it was about eighty-five, uh, or more, only eighty-five or ninety that were on there.
So thirty, thirty extra people put their limbs out and had to be counted?
Correct. And that was one thing that Travis had told me many times was, is, you'll pick it up, and that was, we had taken a lot of the stuff that was out there, we had kind of rated them, small, medium, and large piles. The small and medium, we went out first, he went out first with, with money, and tried to get all of those to save on the cost. But what was happening was, as soon as he'd pick them up, they'd drop them around.
Okay, I just had a phone call before the meeting there, asking if they got all the limbs and picked up, and I told him, as far as I knew, that it were, I hadn't talked to you about it. But, uh, he said that he just, he just cleaned some up and put, uh, I told him to put it out in the road if, uh, if we did, they had already completed it, we figured.
So what he's, if, if he could report that address, and I can get that to Travis before tomorrow morning, um, he's got a list of about ten addresses that he knows.
It's all up in the road up there.
What's the address?
I don't know what the address is, but, you know, I can get it for you.
Uh, and he knows, the ones that have called us or emailed me or contacted me about that, those are the first ones, and then he'll start back on his normal route.
Yeah, well, it, you know, that, that's not the normal route would be good, because he, he just put it, he just put it out in there.
Okay. We've had a lot of people call and comment that they were very appreciative that limbs were finally picked up. We don't, the town, town hall doesn't normally get a lot of calls from people thanking us for stuff, so. Next item on there is graffiti at the amphitheater has been reported. Um, there had been some in the past, and hasn't been as inappropriate as some of the stuff that's out there now. Um, and who we, and I'm, I'm not going to even say stuff, it's, it's, and so I've got a guy who right now is actually Sutton Suggs, who's out of Jonesville, I believe. Uh, I think he's done some work for the town in the past. Uh, he was actually the one who did the, um.
Do the sidewalk, how I hear you.
Uh, I mean, I think he did the one, the sidewalks down at the, the festival.
Yeah.
And then he also did the stuff at the, uh, the roof up on top of the, uh, the storage building on Sunset, as well as the cyclones at the amphitheater. Uh, so I've reached out to him, I reached out to another guy, and he said he's not interested in coming out, but he's given us a price, uh, cleaning up those, those areas. I also asked him while he's out there to go ahead and look at getting us a price on cleaning up the tunnel, I call it the tunnel, it's that area at the very top of the amphitheater. Um, since he's already going to be cleaning up a lot of that area that has graffiti on it, it's going to look weird when you have a bunch of white areas and these old black kind of areas where it's kind of like the old growth that's on there. Uh, so I asked him to be the price on the whole thing. The other thing I asked him to look at was the price on the, um, the pergola, the pergola, uh, at the amphitheater, uh, and I'm not pricing that, so, uh, if there, you know, reasonable pricing on there, uh, I'd go ahead and do it for him. If y'all are okay with that. The biggest thing I didn't know of is, it's going to be noticeably different, where it's not going to have that black concrete look on there. It's going to look like it originally did when it was built.
I don't know, I think the age look is.
Well, I mean, I mean, it's hard, it's hard not to do it, you know, if you want to clean it all, it's not.
So they get that, that stair at the bottom and that bottom.
It's going to be all, not that, the place.
So there is, and, and I could actually tell you something graffiti that's on there now, down there. Okay. There's somebody that loves Trump, and then there's somebody who truly loves Cindy, and then there's a, a date that's on there. Um, that's, is, is going to be.
And there's stuff there that is in the bottom, you got that bottom trunk, that's, that is the bottom of the amphitheater, the right side, all that right there, and then at the top too.
Yes.
There's a control, there's stuff up there.
Exactly.
And there's stuff at the bottom.
There's also some stuff that's on, we call it the dugout down there.
Yes, that's where a lot of them.
But I, I, I'll get the prices, I'll send it out to you, if y'all are cool with, go ahead and move forward with this, because when you, when they remove the graffiti of some of those spots, it's going to be noticeably different in those areas. But I think it would look much better.
You can't do.
It has it.
There's such things as historic dirt.
Yeah.
Then you get a price just to clean the graffiti, and then a price.
That's what I've got it separated on.
And, and then something to make it look old again.
Supposed to turn it up.
It has that nostalgia look to it. I mean, you don't want something that's been there forever to look plain, you know what I mean, you know, that patina look in it. Because we talk about, you know, it's like, shucks, we get this cleaned off, and it's going to look like that, and you're going to lose a whole ambiance of it, you know, that's.
Listen, I tell you what, let's, uh, go forward and redo the whole thing, you know, if, if, okay, there's a grant for that.
Well, we were talking about that Friday, uh, what it would take, how much money it would take, and you're going to just give that place.
All right. Next item here, um, uh, I had been at a meeting downtown, uh, there was a guy, I'm sorry, we're on a road, there's, there's a guy that is, who does the Our Town segment for E T V. Uh, and he was interested, he was someone in Packland, and we talked, and he came out, uh, and so they're featuring, uh, Packland on, on a segment. You've probably seen Our Town, they have done, Inman, they've done, I think, Camabel in the past, if you go on, line, ma'am?
Sipla, the, uh, that, that they feature a new town every week.
Yes.
On Fridays.
And then everyone just kind of says, this is Our Town, and, and so, uh, they wanted to talk to some people in the community who kind of knew some of the nostalgia on there, and so this, Macbeth is one of those people that were on there. Uh, and I believe Gene, Jim, uh, was on there as well, um, and so. And so they are reaching out if anybody else in the council would be interested in speaking. Let me know. It's not done yet. But see the episodes and then you kind of get an idea of what they're looking for. River Fest update, currently at nineteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars in sponsorships. I remember last year we were eight thousand dollars in sponsorships. So significantly more than in the past. Currently have 24 craft vendors, 10 food vendors, Megalox Challenge will be there. Music by The Embers, Monaco 1962, Cody Lane Band. Currently doing promotions at Facebook and Rome High School. And we'll also be doing some stuff on Radio Billmore, posters, banners. And we are putting together a press release and we'll work with the One Smart Bird Tourism Department. And they'll be helping us to promote this in more locations throughout the region. We're about to do the alcohol license process, the car show promotion is underway. The festival map is finalization in progress. And we'll, we've also got a few sites on Facebook that vendors typically go to. Because I'd like to have at least 35 to 40 craft vendors there and 15 to 20 food vendors at the event. Next committee meeting is Monday, September 11th, this Monday at 5:30 PM.
That's the River Fest committee.
Sir?
It's the River Fest.
That's the River Fest committee, correct. The Christmas committee update tree line will be December 2nd at 6:00 PM. It will include decorations similar to last year, kids choir, Christmas movie decorations. Throughout the town, we'll include town hall decorations, the repaired snowflakes, I'll come back to that. Utility poles, the bridge decorations. And we're looking at potentially using garland on the poles. Didn't look and find out that there are outlets on there, electrical outlets. There's, we're doing a home display contest that was done in the past, additional lights playing locations throughout town. The Christmas parade will be December 9th at 10:00 AM. The route is to be determined. We are working with Central PACT and having to go through parts of Central PACT. But that's still to be determined. They're also looking at having Central PACT homes being part of the home decorating contest. The committee will meet again September 18th at 5:30 PM. I had reached out to a couple of people whom the mayor had recommended to do sandblasting and powder coating of these snowflakes. It's a little higher cost, but it does create a product that we could end up having for decades long now. If y'all are okay with moving forward with that, we'll take a big chunk of the Christmas decoration budget on there. But I think it'd be worthwhile in the end. Otherwise, we're just going to scrape and.
I think are those, yeah, those snowflakes.
Those snowflakes are five feet in width, so they're very large.
Yeah, I had a buddy guy, you know, I talked to, he said a four foot, my four foot, I don't know, so.
Okay.
It would work. And you read Trump's statement?
But they're looking at around, I had one quote around, I believe it was around 140, 150 dollars per snowflake to do sandblasting and powder coating on there. Another one that was 155, the one that was 155, weird enough, wanted us to deliver them to them and have to pick them up. The one who was actually the low price, he picked up and delivered. We've got approximately 35 to 38 snowflakes to be able to use. I believe I could get the price down lower than what it currently is. But like I said, it would take about half of the Christmas decorations budget. I think it'd be worthwhile, but I wanted to get y'all's opinion on that before.
So the snowflakes is going to go down on.
We'll start putting a little Highway 9. That'll be another cost to be on there. If you'll notice up there, some of the outlets are not in place. They've been messed up. And so I can repair some sections of those, the outlets that come off the utility poles. But we'll give as much as we can on 9. I'd like to also try to do more areas that had been done in the past, I think Sunny Acres Road possibly coming down here. The committee has tried to figure out ways in which we could connect up to where Central PACT has their lights. So it looks like one continuous group all the way down through here. It's all in a matter of how many snowflakes we can kind of get up there. Keep in mind each pole will end up having to have a bracket attached bottom to the pole first. And then you'll slide the, the snowflake onto the bracket up there. It's not a cheap thing, but we're going a lot less costly by buying new ones. And we are refurbishing the existing ones that are out there. I also was told recently that I believe it's Chesney that is currently auctioning off some of their Christmas lights. And so I'll be looking into seeing what that is there.
Have you contacted the town or the, you know, these poles and verified that the weight of these orders, they're okay?
They've had them in the past and what they have told us in the past is if we deliver them and put them on the poles, they'll put them up themselves.
And they'll put them up for us. But if you're talking about putting new lights other places, you're going to have to, it'll be a cost.
Right.
Are we able to install a plug?
They won't install.
We'll have to install our own plug.
Yeah, we have to modify them.
But the poles are, the poles are okay to hang these lights on?
We still have to get their approval for it because it's their poles. But these are designed to be able to be put on these poles. It's not going to cause wind issues, it's not going to cause weight issues, that sort of thing.
That's what I was thinking. I mean, if they're metal, then obviously they weigh a bit.
Speaking of things on poles, I know the little alley that the.
Flags.
Flags, yeah, and she got Christmas ones and town, PACT ones, which I noticed in town, PACT ones are gone. You had mentioned something about getting some bigger ones.
I'm looking at getting some bigger ones and I completely get it. When you look at those things, you order those online, they look a lot bigger than what they actually are on site. And so we are looking at getting bigger ones that are much larger and be decorated for holidays. And I'll be giving y'all designs on that as well. It won't be that much since this is going to be, there's only six poles that are down here on the circle. If you wanted to go up more.
I know she had a heater and we had an alternating, I think, on the bridge. And then there were some downtown on Holiday.
On the bridge, we're looking at doing some lighted garland wrapping around the poles that are on there. I personally would advise not having the poles on there, on those on the bridge, because the proximity to the road, you're going to have trucks potentially hit them and kids knocking them down. But if y'all want to do that, not a problem. But I've had issues with that in other communities where I had a bridge and we put poles or put the banners with the poles that are on there and the kids rip them down as fast as we can put them up.
I don't know, but they weren't up last year, were they? I think they were up the year before that, when Allie was young.
I think it would have made more sense if they returned to the outside of the circle.
To the inside, yeah. But I don't remember having any issues with them. I know we just had to replace them, but I don't remember.
And I hear that they, they look big online when she got them.
Because the ones that are on the poles that go around the circle, there's enough pole that you can put them up 50 feet in air and that's not a problem. What I'm.
Maybe you can't see them.
Well, I'm not saying we do that. I think we have to put about eight or nine feet off the ground so that we can get to them. The issue that she got, the poles that are on the bridge is they're so short. And where the curve is on the top of the section there, you can only be able to get that top piece so high, which means that bottom piece ends up being in a spot that is easy to get to. And seeing as we've been already having some issues with banisters, I didn't want to encourage them. But if y'all want to pursue that, I can look at the cost of banners on the bridge.
Well, I'm going to put the garland, it's fine, we don't want to hate.
I think in the past, I've done wreaths on there and I've seen the garland, it looks really good. And we've got outlets at the top of all the poles, I think you can easily flood them in. And then what would happen is, is they would come on when the lights come on on the bridge. The snowflakes, are y'all good with, do y'all see the need and the investment to go ahead and have them sandblasted power?
Same for years.
I'm going to do what I can to get the prices as low as possible on this. If we have to go, if I have to go pick them up in my truck, I'll do whatever I can to get it as low as possible in terms of the cost.
Where does that put us with our Christmas budget? Is that going to straighten us in other areas or do we need to pull our funds out?
I think it'll be okay. I mean, of course, you've got hospitality tax money that you potentially could put towards this. And you do have some surplus there if council wanted to use that. But I had put that amount in there because I thought that the committee wanted to do a lot bigger, bolder, more stuff at the amphitheater. But it looks like we're doing something similar to what's been done in the past. The only thing we're adding on is the, the purchase of the screen, screening projector, which we're going through, grading from 10 to the top and trying to get funding for that.
Is that at the top or at the bottom?
Ma'am?
Is that at the top or the bottom? The movie?
The movie will be done at the, up at the amphitheater in front of what's considered the Peanut House and that big, large area out there. What we had talked about was putting the screen in front of the fire tower. Yes. That way, if people were coming in at the last minute, their lights would not be shining into and they'd be behind, so it wouldn't be as bad. Oh, Mary? But are y'all okay with the snowflakes and investing some more dollars in there? If you're good, I'll go ahead and move forward with that.
I think it's great.
May I have a call?
That's what I'm saying, is I'm looking at around 150 to 155 dollars per. And I don't have quotes for you because these are guys who just send text messages. But I'm working on getting below 140, which if you've got it below 140,000 dollars, it'd be less than 5,000 dollars. And the tax specimens would be okay with that.
We can come back to that.
The next scheduled meeting of the history committee is scheduled for September 19th at 5:30. The rest of this information, you'll have to go through that. If you let me know how you want to move forward with the snowflakes, I believe I can get the price down to 140 a piece at that point. I think it'd be worthwhile and it'll be, still work within our purchasing policy.
You don't get a vote on this, we're just wanting to have a consensus.
Sir?
You're asking for a vote.
I would love to have a consensus that y'all are okay with moving forward with this and we're getting the lowest bid of producing investment on here. But if you want, I get it because I talked to Travis about this and if y'all need to, we can just. The other option we're looking at is just steel wooling, because that was the original plan. Steel wool, scrape it down as much as we can, take some spray paint, spray paint as best we can and put it back up there. Because at the end of the day, if they're going to be up 20, 30 feet in air, are you going to see all the rust spots there? May or may not. The powder cutting and the sandblasting just ensures that we've got another 10, 15 years of the snowflakes.
I don't want us to run into what happened last year where everything was kind of rushed in the last minute. So I think we should give the go ahead. I think it's a good idea, good investment.
I don't need, need money. You didn't do it? How much, I mean, so we already, we already got lighting for it, right?
We already have the screen lighting, we already have the wires and all of the, the bulbs and the sockets and all that kind of stuff on there. Bless you. And I believe the cost on that was around 80 to 100 dollars per. And so this will be added another 150 or less, 140 onto that cost there. Still much lower than purchasing brand new ones.
Oh, this is brand new?
Brand new ones are between 5 and, sorry, 550 and higher for LED five foot. And that's not a leading frame as well.
Does that conclude, does that conclude the amount of time that the trash guys have been working on? Probably.
I don't know. I have to estimate on that based on what their hourly rate is. What's, what's good on this is they do have breaks in between their regular tractor needs and their limb pickup. And they've been able to do things here and there, which is they've already been able to strip down some of this stuff. So it gives them another project to do. So it's worked out well. They're ready to go ahead and have those things ready till they go ahead and start stripping them.
So how many have they stripped down?
They have stripped off, I have to look, I told them to go ahead and strip down all but maybe three or four of them so that we could use those as a template as we go to wrap the wire in the back on them to know where the bulbs go and where all that kind of stuff is. I know they've done, I think they've done at least around 15 or 20. I could be wrong with that. But it sounds like they've done a pretty good amount.
No?
That's all for now, okay?
I have a question. So would you have to identify those poles, maybe down, downtown, the ones that would do much of the work? That would have to be repaired?
So first off would be is, one thing I'm putting together is a map of all of the different poles that are on 9. And then which ones have outlets or something up there. Then it's a matter of, we'll have to find an electrician or if you think our insurance would cover it, I'll go up there with a ladder myself and start testing all these to see if there's power on. If there's not, we'll mark them down as needs repaired. And then we just go down the line and identify anything that needs to be repaired. Some of them are in decent shape. I don't know if the power is on. I don't know anything. I would hate to have a situation where we install these on the pole, go to plug in, no lights.
Yeah, that's what I wondered how they, we would need to identify the owners before we want to.
The other thing is you have to identify, if you, they're there, you've really been noticing, but there are a band wire that goes around them and then there's a narrow kind of metal bracket. And it has like a, a little hoop on the outside. And those snowflakes have these kind of hooks that go down and they're designed to go into those little hooks and that's how they stay up there. When you go back down 9 and you look at, they're funny looking brackets that are up there. They're very close to the pole, but they're designed to take those things. I've done them myself and just hooked them on there. They're, they're quite handy to do yourself, but.
So you need to see if we have enough of those?
I'll have to figure out if you have enough of those and, and the outlets that are up there. Sir?
So we would pay somebody to test all the plugins that we thought we were going to put.
Or?
The snowflake on the pole. Why not put the snowflake on the pole, see if it works? If it doesn't, then market. And then the electrician doesn't have to be paid to go to every single pole and test them all.
So if you wanted to, if we wanted to do that, what would end up happening is, is they go and do the installation possibly in late November, early December. They go and put them on the poles, light them up. And then we are hoping that we can get an electrician in time to get it taken care of in the month of December.
Well, they're not going to go on every pole. They're going to go on like every other pole.
Right, exactly.
So probably the poles that are identified of where you would put that snowflake, just identify those.
What are you saying? You didn't understand what you were saying. Say if you, you put, you put a, the snowflake and plug it in, then you, and you know it don't work. If it don't work, you know, it don't work. But then Patrick's saying there, you might not have time to get the electrician to rewire it or whatever, you know?
But you can do that too, right? You can say, "Okay, I want it on this pole." Test the electric outlet before you have to put the heavy thing up there and then plug it in. But you can do it either way.
I would say to Laura.
I would say the more cost-effective approach to it, because if, if we're going to pay somebody to test it all, then they can identify which ones do and don't work, then...
We have to go at the same time.
Right, so I mean, when did you plan on installing?
So the installation, it's, it's my understanding is that what has been done in the past, and I'm looking, Ms. Kirby on this, is that you take the snowflake, you put it on the pole that you want to put it on. The electric company is actually the one who installs it. Lockhart Power or Duke, they'll actually go on and install it, they'll plug it in, they'll come down. If it's on, it's on, if it's off, it's off.
Right.
And then at that point, it would probably be a good idea to go ahead and have a electrician in waiting, uh, that week?
Let me ask you this.
Not long ago, beginning of November, and it's still winter. Okay, just don't turn it on until...
Why, why do we have to get the, uh, electrical company to do it? Central Bank?
So they don't, they don't charge us for that, is what I'm saying.
Okay. The Central Bank, they didn't do it, man. They lived at home.
I had a conversation with Buddy about that and I said, you know, that's great that you put them up, but Lockhart Power and Duke has told us that if you place it, is that correct?
What?
If you place the snowflake by the pole, that they'll actually install it.
Lockhart does both, both the upper part and down here too, even though they don't service this up.
Okay.
They, they do both of them.
Okay.
I'll add one. I was gonna put those ones on there as a snowflake, once it makes your lights work.
Unfortunately, the decorations over the years have not been maintained and taken care of and all that stuff on there. And so you're gonna have to spend some dollars to get it back to where it was.
Okay. Brian, what do you want to know? Do you have? Keep y'all hand out a lot of fruit.
As you can see from the report, we have rather slow run in the building department, uh, collected a total of nineteen hundred ninety-seven dollars, issued six permits, conducted six plan reviews, code enforcement, we did forty-six of those. And as you know, those are all by complaint only and we're having a good bit of success. The people are probably averaging four calls a week. Uh, people wanting to know what they've gotta do to comply once they receive a letter. And we've done twelve inspections. The next part of it is, uh, you know, again, this takes back to, uh, me finding out somebody complained about our company publicly. And so I researched the particular individual, found out that they had a final order and, uh, hearing, uh, before the LLR and if you keep reading that, you can see they were ordered to pay fifteen thousand dollars to the homeowner. The homeowner actually hired a structural engineer and took this before LLR and the LLR investigative team and a structural engineer found twenty-one deficiencies as you can see on page three of five. This is a particular contractor that complained on me for asking for plans. I prefer that we, uh, can request plans from a builder, but I do not know what they were built and I'm not allowed to ask for plans. I know some of the folks are a little concerned that, you know, we're being heavy handed or whatever. This is what we defend against, guys, uh, builders like this. I'm not picking on this particular builder, but this is public information, this is public record that anybody can pull this up on. Any builder out there that's ever had an order against them. Again, and, uh, I totally understand, you know, I've been in this business for thirty-one years. If you look at these twenty-one items, any one of them accomplished a thousand dollars to fix. This particular builder builds four hundred houses a year. If only they had half of them in, uh, ten items in a thousand a piece, we're talking about four hundred dollars in savings in cutting corners. So there has been a little bit inside of what I do on a daily basis and what I try to prevent from happening in Packer. I feel like I would pack it a little better than letting any builder come here without plans. This is the only builder that's complaining about me asking for friends. He asked for a permit three months ago, he didn't get one. And, uh, as of today, he's still on that one. And he won't get one until he provides some plans that I can look at and review. As you can see, uh, there's very strong words. Findings of the state building coach council. Engagement in misconduct, he performs substandard work, committing an unprofessional act that is likely to harm the public. This particular builder went as far as having a senator to call this town as our goal. Does, as for legacy, is that correct?
Yes, I received a, an email from a state representative, and I think I reported to you. Because I think you'd asked about, uh, any of the correspondence between myself and...
But, you know, again, I'm, I'm not here to beat this builder up, this is public information. All I'm saying is, I'm not gonna ask anybody for anything that I can't show them the code. Building codes are absolute minimum available by. And, you know, I'm just requesting, uh, to be supported by council, administration, if we try to do our job out here, guys, because I can't do without your support. Any questions? So, Ken is, uh, still trying to build a house, is he not providing any, uh, plans? They gave me one set and, um, we actually got that one set approved, I haven't got any more. Now I'm getting, uh, on and off below the middle block, don't get that, that deep. It's not good, it's a waste. We're, we're, you know, we're gonna work with them, it, it doesn't matter what mistake anybody's made. That, that's not my job to condemn, it's my job to enforce the code, you know, no matter what somebody did yesterday and things we did. We're gonna help them build a code compliant structure if they live within this town. Whether, you know, my children end up buying or their children do, they can get a good house. That's our job, make sure they do.
Are these your codes or these?
State.
State, is this, is this the same code as Spark County, it's self followed?
Those, those are international codes, uh, they're adopted by the state of South Carolina and everybody has to use the same code. Just land. If you, you keep that packet and if you'll read it from the back thoroughly, you'll realize there's nothing that ever got my name on it, it's all state of South Carolina, international codes, engineers. Many of their deficiencies, the house is about to fall down. And that's a very serious matter, when somebody, you know, a young couple goes out and buys that home and figure they're staring down thirty years of, of payments that they thought they bought their dream home. That's the kind of stuff we try to, you know, fend off. And, you know, when you hand me a full plan and I can't tell you whether or not I've got a slab house across space, state of bill trusts me up, if you don't give me any more information than that, I, I really can't do much of the job for you. Now, we're not Lockhart Building Inspector, not I knew that coming in, it's, you know, it's okay. That's not what we're here for, we're here to provide a service, do a good job with this town. This is my hometown, follow me and I expect a good job here.
Well, I hadn't read all the through it, so this would be his first time he's built in South Carolina again?
It's common.
So how was it that he was able to build if these were the codes that he was supposed to have been here by, but yet he has all these violations?
He received a fine and he killed the dog stop.
So they paid your fine?
And they never... You just hope you got a good building inspector all the time when you get there. And you won't ever have to get one of those four bucks, guys.
Then he's still going in.
There's a lot more out there than this damn thing.
Well, yeah, sure, but I mean, just, I mean, this is just a theory, but...
Any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Black?
And anybody, y'all, anytime, I'll be glad, I'll be damned about that.
Say somebody's waiting within their business publicly.
Good evening, councilors, good to see everybody. I'd like to point out last month, if you're looking here on the smallest building installed, but, uh, we also have installed at the police department that you approved. And our paramedics and staff, officer, we've simply provided training to all town police. Everybody's functional, I'll break that, I really appreciate you guys breaking that. And our next goal is for one of those, each one of our patrol vehicles to be interested in time. Of course, last month, we had a hundred and eighty-two calls for service, we had five hundred and thirteen officer appreciated contacts. Carl was stolen from Walgreens Park on this week, if you hear about that. However, the keys were left on the menu by the owner and it wasn't located. Officer Littleton recovered, stole the vehicle for about ninety minutes later. It's just like up to the date as well, but Spark County Sheriff's Office Academy responded with their own track suspect down, we really appreciate their rapid response and assistance because we really got there and made the problem whole to us immediately when the question was asked and helped out. The investigation's ongoing on that subject. There's an instance of vandalism, there'll be more, uh, things that will be considered malicious mischief recently. Uh, they are currently being investigated, we have a commission, and we're working on that. I met a team specializing in evidence storage, getting attention from SLIM last week about fixing the issues that, that might have impacted that. Uh, we have a plan together and, um, we've been acting that, uh, this country. Uh, other officers have participated in portable property, installed a terminal near the facility and have been, I think, sort of a courtesy response as needed there. And while they took that opportunity, people, general manager, about complaints we've been receiving recently of speeding from dump trucks returning to their property. He was very sensitive to our issues and the states he can take appropriate action. Although those trucks are not employees of ultimate, they're contractors, but of course he has methods of communication to express them, that we have notices issued like a stop or a restoration citation. That is not something commercial drivers wants. And I'm very, very excited to announce that Officer Hensley and Wingo will be graduating from the criminal justice academy tomorrow morning at ten AM. The graduation is broadcast live from the South Carolina Criminal Justice Academy Facebook page. Uh, so I'm hoping that people here in Packer will watch and support our, our officers. Uh, they are required by a new settlement, complete four additional weeks of training at hour class before they will be cleared to operate over a new, as an independent officer. But they've all done a fantastic job and are so excited to come back to town and, uh, be served by these officers now. Any questions or answers for me?
So then this is five, sir?
Yes, sir.
Oh, everyone?
Yes, sir. Those are our last two questions, please.
Six included, sir?
So we have six?
Included, sir?
Yeah.
Oh, you getting feedback on stopping the, uh, uh, taking wheelers and parking inside, uh, parties up there?
I did, I actually had some professional drivers that actually came to the police department to talk to me. I had something called, um, they were pretty upset, like any other conversation, the ones that's friends and what the ordinance was, the idea behind forcing them out was, they all completely understood. Um, we have some professional drivers that live here within town, so they just wanted to hear it, was the biggest thing. They, they absolutely understand the point of the ordinance. So it was, it was good interaction and I think we all understand each other. Harvey did say they did intend in the future to pay that lot, the courts that got to do that were far higher than they expected them to be, so I can't, not why. Dale?
So, when will we be able to go to twenty-four seven? Because I know right now we're gapping.
Yes, sir. They'll, they'll start FTO on Monday, so you can figure four weeks from that day we have a fully operation. And that is state law. It used to be, but because of some issues where officers that had very little experience and training would actually kill the line of duty in our states, they have mandated that, uh, as part of the... Remember, I remember when I was, um, I got awarded by the academy for our policy procedure manual, that particular guideline was passed at the same time as the guideline required for weeks of training after they come back from the academy. Otherwise, it would have been more than two weeks, we would have got this guideline operation done already. Now we're, we're sort of mandated, they have to be uniformed, so at all times work on duty until they complete that phase. Dale?
Is there any update on stopping the trucks from coming down?
Uh, I'll speak with Mr. Kay about that, we are on the FTO's timetable on that at this point. The representative W. N. has asked that we not issue citations for people bothering and going out here until they had, or are going to assign a circle. We, this particular section of law, where he asked that the circle needed to have a sign that said no through trucks before we would allow, in their meeting, to issue citations. We haven't issued any ones. Uh, I was expressing before the meeting, it's the only thing I did have information on that I wanted to be able to object you on, but we have not gotten any feedback from the FTO. They were very rapid to respond, we told them we had an issue, scheduled a meeting and hearing complaints, but the responses slowed down now, which seems to kind of be typical.
Are there future meetings, meetings in line for some of these other rooms that we talked about?
Yes, sir.
I just have one more thing and, and, um, I know it's the age of edge of who polices the police, uh, because, um, there again, several people have noted where our officers are exceeding our speed limits that their blue lights are not on. One particular person did follow to see if they were going somewhere in the dark. So, I, I think they need to find these people.
Yes, sir. We've had that conversation and that's an expectation. However, please keep in mind, they are dispatched by radio and sometimes they receive calls by radio that would require some environmental policy to allow them to drive a little quicker and then they're canceled. So they don't pull on a crime scene or something like that around. I, I, I've fielded those complaints my entire career and by no means am I making any excuse for any particular situation. In particular situations, I need to know, because I could hold that, I'd figure out a tactic on it.
Well, that's what I asked them, I said, did you get the car number, did you get this? No?
If they're, if they're on their way to a call, because it's, they dispatch, their lights should be on?
Not for a call. There, there are certain criteria that meet that, there are certain criteria. Be a little quicker, you can get there, but there's three codes essentially.
What call would not constitute blue lights came on and speeding? And what call would constitute?
A call that officer safety would be paramount in that if you announce your presence as you arrive, somebody might take down, something like that.
So their lights off?
Yes, sir. Lights off, siren off, silent approach, turn headlights off, that kind of thing. So there, there's individual, and, and don't get me off, there aren't a lot of situations where that should be happening. There's no justification for just speeding for the sake of, you know, driving lots of them. But there is a flip side at that point where it's, it's pretty rare to get significant complaints when there's not security. Dispatch people, I've called, as opposed to distracted, but it's, it's not acceptable. Any individual, times and dates, I sort of don't worry.
Yeah, well, that's not true because it, you know, it wasn't the first time that they had observed it and that's why, that was like, hey. Well, it's, you know, we could pull them over, you know, and they're not going anywhere. And then the last time, you know, she'd say, oh, they should follow. They didn't go anywhere.
That's a familiar information.
That's what I told her next time we get it, because I need to be able to pull the time that anyone?
That's what I'm trying to do. Is there? Thank you.
And that, I guess, I, I found a document, the expiration on the application deadline is October tenth. And there is no, uh, demand for federal match.
Okay.
There's no, there is no match technically. It does say that providing evidence, legal support and willingness to contribute matching funds can positively influence the application. support, and willingness to contribute matching funds can positively influence the application, so we don't necessarily have to match or put a match, but we can at least say what we're willing to match, towards it, if needed, so, we got a heartbreak, I would say an easy twenty percent would be fine.
And, and as soon as I get this cost on there...
Yeah, yeah, I just, I just wanted to let you know that I did find that, find it.
I just didn't want councilors to commit themselves, when you say twenty percent, it's eight hundred thousand dollars to renovate, it's not gonna be that much.
Yeah, eight hundred thousand to renovate, yeah.
Oh, I want to say one thing, I'm sorry, on that beautification grant, is, is that one that's associated to One Sparkburg, because they, they have, I saw on the news where One Sparkburg has a beautification grant, I saw it on the news, uh...
Talking about them buildings, you know, you know, presides and things like that, you talking, I don't know what you're talking about.
I'm not sure. I saw it on the news the other morning, something about beautification, and you can, uh, put in an application, what was it, twenty-five hundred dollars?
Small, small business.
Yeah.
Yeah, small business.
Big to the soccer.
Yeah, presides and things like that.
Yeah, but still, even if we had some of those small businesses, even if I wanted, I mean, five hundred dollars is five hundred dollars. I don't know if that's something we would, uh, decide or something, we could use...
Yeah, he, he spoke on that, uh, you know, a couple meetings ago, and, um, it's small, um, um...
It's part of the power?
Yeah.
Power up?
Yeah.
But I'll, I'll research and I'll find out when there's talk about it.
Yeah.
Might not be the power up.
No, one power up, she's just standing there talking about, um, you know, you can use it for your trees, you can use this for cleanup, and it's, it's a beautification grant, yeah, yesterday morning news, was it?
Somebody check it through again, I don't know.
Yeah, it's, it's one of them.
Okay, uh, I don't have anything else, uh, I think we, you know, you all probably have to meet, uh, um, with, uh, the guy, uh, there, yes, he's left, and, uh, and y'all probably have to meet him soon, uh, get, uh, but, uh, I think, um, things to be, to be taken care of, uh, thank you all for your hard work, and I thank y'all, you know, and we...
Russ, what's your?
Seven.
Talking to the base of the table, all the paper.